Call the City Council Work Session Order, Clerk please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Michael Angeli? Byning? Germaine?
Here.
Lemoore?
Here.
Mayor Clerk?
Here. We have a few items and besides the session that comes after this, so we'll get right to the first item. I'm going to have Mr. Pastu give some background as we then hear from the City Attorney regarding the discussions last meeting in power outages. Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple items related to this. This is a follow-up from our meeting on June 4th involving a citizen's ordinance request but also pertaining to looking at solutions related to some of the power outages that have been experienced by residents and businesses in the area here around the city and county building. So, the first part of it is, I'll give you a little update with where I am with DTE. I provided them a number of addresses so that they can do a little bit of research as to when these outages are occurring and in their notes to see what was the cause of the outages and then provide them some opportunity to discuss potential solutions. Given some summer scheduling issues, we agreed upon to bring this back to the City Council at the July 16th meeting to go over that information. They feel that's enough time for them to do a thorough enough review and to prepare for the presentation and subsequent discussion with the City Council. The second aspect of it is, is actually the proposed ordinance that was, the language that was presented at that June 4th meeting as well. And at this point, I would just ask that the City Attorney, Matt Budz, would provide a verbal opinion regarding the details of that request.
Very good.
Your Honor, did some research on the topic and as far as background, the Public Service Commission in Michigan has the complete power and jurisdiction to regulate all public utilities in the state. That relates to rates, fares, fees, charges, services, rules, and condition of services and all other matters relating to public utilities. The one carve-out that is still available for municipalities deals with contracting for rates, which is not directly relevant to the issue that has been presented before us. Another issue with the proposed ordinance is that it would define unreliable service and a city ordinance which would attempt to do that would be in contradiction to state law which requires the Public Service Commission to adopt service quality and reliability standards relating to transmission, generation, and distribution of electric utility power. And therefore, that would be problematic from the standpoint of the city attempting to regulate in that field. The statute does say that any utility provider which exceeds or fails to meet service quality reliability standards may be fined by the Public Service Commission. And I would also point out that as to a retroactive proposal in the ordinance, that retroactive rate-making in a utility situation is prohibited. Therefore, based on one of the overarching themes of the Public Service Commission being uniformity in service and the responsibility of the Public Service Commission to investigate each complaint, it would be my belief that there is not action that the city could take but that any citizens who are ratepayers for the utility could file a complaint with the Public Service Commission.
Questions from Council?
Your Honor.
Yes, Lemoore?
Yeah, real quickly, just, I know she said that the Public Service Commission is the only people that can find utilities. Did they mention as to who, where the fines go to or where the proceeds would be sent to?
I can't tell you that, but as far as penalties that could be in play, if there is repetitive interruption, I would point out to Rule 46746, which says that unless an electric utility has a waiver, a customer of a utility that experiences and notifies the utility of more than seven interruptions in a 12-month period, due to a same-circuit repetitive interruption would be entitled to a billing credit on the customer's next bill. And the amount of that credit would be the greater of $25 or that customer's monthly customer charge.
On average, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so the amount of the credit is provided to any other distribution customer would be that customer's minimum bill. The other thing I should point out with this, essentially, it's a resetting clock so that if there are seven interruptions in a 12-month period, that then resets the clock. I believe that it would be likely, my interpretation, and I haven't found authority for this yet, my interpretation would be that it's a billing credit on that next bill. So if that next billing amount is in excess of $25, that would be where that credit would occur.
Do we know what defines the same circuit?
Um, I can get you that definition if you give me just a moment. So a same-circuit repetitive interruption means a grouping of more than 10 customers on a circuit who experience multiple interruptions under all conditions. And from there, it says that at its option, an electric utility may report on specific identifiable circuit segments rather than whole circuits, as long as the criteria for identification of the specific circuit segments are fully explained in the report to the MPSC.
Uh, Your Honor, to clarify on that, Mr. Budz, that's more than 10 customers?
Uh, that would be correct, yes.
So that would mean that an individual has no recourse against service interruption to a utility provider? Is that correct?
Um, well, so what you would have to look at is that it's the definition that a customer that experiences and notifies the utility of more than seven of those in a 12-month period, due to that definition of a same-circuit repetitive interruption, that gives rise to that complaint. I'm not going to say there aren't other complaints that could be made. The overarching purpose of the MPSC is to have reliable electrical service. So I would certainly say if there's a continued problem that doesn't necessarily meet those definitions, that certainly the customer could still make inquiry or complaint to the MPSC.
Right. One more question. Do we know who makes up the Public Service Commission?
Um, so the Public Service Commission, my understanding is, and I would want to clarify this, my belief is that it's appointees from the governor's office primarily.
Thank you. Questions from Council? Well, this is a work session, but I know that we had a resident that made inquire. Is there a clarification, darling, that you'd like to have versus a comment?
I want to make a comment up here. It'll be short.
Okay. We do have items, and if it's more than that, then obviously during the City Council meeting, there is citizens' time to make, I'll just say open comments, but since it's a follow-up since our last meeting, if your comment or your question for clarification may be unappreciated.
Okay, thank you. I'll be quick. Darlene Dykman, 222 East 7th Street, Monroe, Michigan. I realize I'm not an attorney, nor do I have before me the rules and regulations of the PSC as it pertains to utilities, but I spoke with them today on two points. What you didn't mention when you mentioned the seven outages is that is how the Public Service Commission determines an unreliable utility. And that is exactly what I called Detroit Edison. But if my proposal were to be accepted, it'd be a simple matter of changing it from four to seven. Seven outages, and then they're considered unreliable. And, um, so that means currently Detroit Edison has three more to go, and then we get that whopping $25 off of our bill if we request it. And B, it doesn't appear that there is a distinct sentence. I talked to the people today at the Public Service Commission, and as I said, there's not a distinct sentence that says a community cannot require anything from a utility provider. So I say, although I don't think I'm getting any support for this, but if I were sitting in your chair, first of all, I'd have called the Public Service Commission and filed a complaint on behalf of the city of Monroe after the first two outages. And secondly, I would go through and put it on the ballot. Maybe the people in Monroe won't bother to vote, but if they do vote, then deal with the issue. And the way that would be handled is Detroit Edison would probably say, hey, we don't want to do business with Monroe. We're not going to provide you any power. That's no big loss, as far as I can tell. If they dropped Monroe, I'd say go like wind out and provide our own power. They're leaving you a coal plant, take advantage of it. And secondly, it'd probably be consistent and cheaper. And DTE, if they decide to sue the city for putting that on the ballot and the people approved it, go for it. Let them sue. File bankruptcy if they win, which is probably the outcome. File bankruptcy like Detroit did. You won't be any worse off. You're probably going to end up in bankruptcy anyhow. Um, I realize you're going to follow the attorney's advice, but that leaves me to understand exactly why Detroit Edison chose Monroe. I'm done.
Thanks, darling. So, I guess a quick comment as a follow-up. So what I heard was, you know, a petition to go on the ballot has to be approved. How is that process as far as getting approval, even get to the voters?
There would be signatures and the language would need to be approved to make sure it was clear and could be placed on the ballot, and those would be the next steps that would have to occur.
Is there, I was saying, obstruction from, what would prevent this outside the city just doing that, that would be entertained, be allowed?
Uh, well, it would depend on if we're talking about an ordinance amendment or a charter amendment. A charter amendment would require approval from the Attorney General's office before it could go on the ballot as far as language is concerned. Language to go on the ballot as far as ordinance would be concerned would just require review for clarity and to, obviously, I would give my opinion that I think that it would not be legally enforceable, but that is not necessarily an impediment to it being on the ballot.
Right.
I did, but he covered it.
Okay. Thanks. Just trying to get, so everybody understood what if the process was, and Council understands that, might be some additional information we may ask for the, from the City Attorney to provide to the Council members as well. The comments from Council? Thank you, Mr. Budz. Mr. Pastu, next item.
Uh, the second item, although not on the outline of the agenda, I wanted to go over a drone presentation that was presented to the Commission on the Environment this past Thursday. Barry Egan in the audience worked in conjunction with that committee in producing it, and so I wanted to share with the City Council, give Mr. Egan an opportunity to talk a little bit about the idea and the purpose behind the drone video.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Barry Egan is still at 405 Washington. I'm Brian James Egan.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. There's a lot of Egans on commissions here. 720 O'Brien Street, but tonight I'm here as Chair of the Commission on the Environment and Water Equality. As you may know, the Commission on the Environment, short for CODI, has worked several, over the past several years, receiving grants and working to not only improve the environment but also working to de-list the River Raisin as an area of concern. We received, we have received PAC Advisory Council support grants for educational outreach. We've done things such as remove the dams, make fish passages, secure the Sterling Island shore, and several other things. So, what, I'll keep it kind of short. We'll have some questions afterwards, but I just want to point out that Councilmember Felder and Millware Boobery is also on the CODI. What I'm about to show you is a video of selects, basically, what, one of our grants, we just received a grant to acquire aerial footage of the River Raisin. And from that, we put together a selects video, if you will, of some of the best shots. This was never intended to be a sort of a video by itself or a standalone. It's meant to serve as an ambient video for the website, for other purposes. But I think is what you will see here is it's just a visual overview of our beautiful River Raisin. And although that the CODI operates in the city of Monroe and the area of concern is the last two miles of the River Raisin, we've opened up the river from Lake Erie to Dundee, Michigan. So this is an overview through our whole community. I always like to try to leverage projects, even though it's a city project, the county is going to look beautiful in this. The city of Dundee, they're going to be jumping up and down when they see this too. Again, this is not meant to be sort of a informational, it's just a visual overview, and hopefully it's some good news and put everybody in a good mood about their community. I would say it's very similar to the drone aerial footage, video that we had done previously for the city of Monroe, but encompasses... Hi. It's okay. So... (noise) 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 We have a couple, we have a couple title slides on the end to thank some of the people that had helped us with this video. But if there are any questions, I realize in a couple of years, we'll have to redo it to get the new logo on the water tower, but... Okay, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you.
If I may, just, again, it's really terrific production, and again, part of your City Council goals is to, again, build upon the river as one of our assets, not just for economic development, but recreation purposes as well. It's a real gem that we have built upon. So, and Brian, sorry about, when we were talking about DTE, I had your father as one of the addresses experiencing, so I was probably thinking more in that realm. But I greatly appreciate your work and that with CODI in producing this video.
Thank you. Vince, next item.
Next item is discussed, just City Council, though, that we have solicited bids at this time for the West Fire Station improvements. It's a project that we've had out there, probably going back at least a couple of years ago, and it involves just updating the kitchen area at the station, but also the bathrooms, bringing them into modern times now that, you know, we have both genders represented on the workforce. And so, the bids are due on July 9th. The intent is to present it to the City Council at the meeting on the 16th of July, and the estimated construction cost for it's about $85,000 based on the architect's estimate. But just wanted to let you know, it's back out there and we'll have it, hopefully, a recommendation for you at the July 16th meeting. Questions?
No. Next item.
Next item is, I'd like to bring Chief White up, talk a little bit about a fire cadet sponsorship. It's a dual enrollment program, and I'll let Rob do the introduction for our guest speaker to go over the program itself.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I was approached with an interesting opportunity by Liam Carroll, who's the Director of Fire Training for Schoolcraft College, about a cadet program for the city of Monroe through their dual enrollment program. As everybody knows, it's been very difficult for recruitment for the whole state and the country for firefighters, and this program's going to allow opportunities for us to maybe get younger kids in high school interested in fire, the fire profession. I've asked Liam to come here today to talk a little bit about the program, and then we'll, you know, we'll go from there.
Mr. Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief. It's been a long time since I stood in front of a council. I'm a retired fire chief from Downriver Department. This is nice that I can't get in trouble, though. The dual enrollment program that Chief White is passing out to you, I'll try to keep this very brief. It's two years in the making. But for those of you who aren't familiar with dual enrollment, it's a program where high school students can go to college. The credits count to both high school and college, and typically the high schools pick up the cost of the college tuition. It never existed in the fire service before until I decided to take a very strong look at the law that affected, Public Act 291, and found out that there is a way to make this happen. It requires a local fire department partnership, so the high school students under the age of 18 or 18 still in high school can join a college program like I have. They have to be a member of a cadet program in a fire department that allows anybody from the ages of 16 up to attend my program if they're associated with a fire department. I've done this in a number of departments locally. We graduated our first three pilot program students this past spring. One of them at the age of 17 while still in high school has a career position offer on the table. So, we're trying to make the opportunity for chiefs to engage their own community stronger and easier, and it seems to be working very well. Chief White struggles like every other chief does in the metro-Detroit area right now, including most of the state, in that there just aren't enough people in the pool. To hire right now, on average, if a chief posts a position, say five positions, they'll get a dozen qualified applicants at best. Many are falling below that. They have a half dozen positions, they'll get a handful of applicants. And what it really boils down to is what the communities have to offer and what the new generation wants to acquire. So the dual enrollment program allows us to kind of dip a little further back into the age pool and gather these kids at a younger age, and I liken it to that high school sweetheart syndrome. If your chief engages the students in the high schools locally early, they will want to stay in the city and become part of that family as they mature to the age that they can apply. The nice thing about the program is you get a chance to mentor, you get a chance to look at, and the chief and his crew will get a chance to determine if this is the right fit for the community, before they ever hire, before they do any interview processing. If they decide to hire, great. If they don't, at the age of 18 or when they graduate high school, there's a natural divorce, so the chief has no further obligations to the students. It works out very well in that they can just simply give them a handshake, say we helped you get your education, which is actually state certification as a firefighter, and 20 college credits on their transcript. They can shake their hand and either hire them or pat them on the back and say thank you and good luck out there, but there's no obligations. The costs are typically absorbed by the high school for tuition and books. The local fire departments have zero required costs in this. They can offer, and I hope that chiefs do offer, uniforms and turnout gear. The uniforms turn out to be a recruiting tool. Many of the departments that have students wearing their uniforms in Schoolcraft Colleges Academy actually get more interest in their own community because the students who are wearing the Schoolcraft patch want the Monroe City patch. They want that career opportunity. It's a great feeder system. So, the chief will determine whether or not he can afford that, and that's up to each department chief. I don't sway chiefs, I don't sway school boards. I let each of them figure out their own finances. But the norm is that the chiefs are supporting in the way of turnout gear and uniforms, as well as a cadet program, which is the required piece, and then the high schools pick up tuition costs. Anything that's left over after that falls on the parents, and I make sure that they're fully clear on that. I wouldn't want it to be caught off guard with a bill. On average, we're seeing that the parents will maybe get a couple hundred dollars worth of costs involved because they have to pick up things that nobody can, PT shorts and shirts, uniform shoes, as opposed to a typical bill of about $5,000 total for the parents if they wait till the day after they graduate high school. So here's an opportunity for the citizens to get back from the government, so to speak, an opportunity for them to get their kids into the career path that they want to go to early. If they wanted to go into math and science, high schools have all kinds of dual enrollment programs for that, but if the students represent that they want to be in fire, there is nothing for them until now. And the reason I'm saying it before you today directly is Chief White and I have discussed, there is a student who lives in Monroe City, who goes to Ida High School and has asked to be in the dual enrollment program. This is a perfect opportunity to step up and make that happen. If not, there's other departments that can adopt, so to speak, but I always like that hometown feel where the kid in the community is picked up by the local fire department, and I think it'd be a great opportunity. So what I've given you is some literature, brochure. The bigger packet is kind of just an all-inclusive. It's got some high school paperwork in there just for you to look at. But the brochure covers the high points. I've given you a template of the resolution that the state of Michigan requires in order for Chief White to have a cadet program. You don't have to follow it exactly, but it gives you the idea on the outage. So, and last would be a business card that's floating in there. The great thing is absolutely minimal costs for the fire department. There is no residual afterwards. You can pat them on the back, or you can hire them. That's up to you. But the costs are kept at an absolute minimum. Anything that the chief can't cover, the parents are on the line for, and we make sure they're aware of that. I would love to see this happen here. I personally am a very local person. I love the videos up there. I captured three of my in-laws' backyards. I live in Frenchtown. My daughter goes to SMCC, so I'm not here as a stranger to the community. I would love to see this kid picked up and in the program, not just because I work at Schoolcraft, but because I'm a retired firefighter myself, and I like to see the next generation get opportunities. I would open it up to questions and answers. I know I've given you two years in about four, five, six minutes.
I have a couple, I'll see if Council members have a... As you went through that, we do have dual enrollment in the high schools currently with the Community College here on a variety of topics. First, I'll ask, maybe it's you or Chief White, has it been presented to the high school yet as a option in a dual enrollment, or is this just the first step?
It will be. We're working on that. We wanted to get our feet wet with Hunter, being a local kid in Ida. He, he lives in Monroe half the time, so we wanted to try and introduce this at a slower pace and then probably talk with Monroe High School. Definitely, because I think that would be a very key, key part of it.
You may want to start with the ISD. Dr. McNew oversees all the high schools, and I know dual enrollment is, might be a start point as well. I'm sure they're, each year they look at what are options on dual enrollment with Monroe Community College. I understand Schoolcraft, which is fine. It's maybe that outreach and see how they, how they may be able to kind of push that out from ISD-type level.
I can put a little bit more onto that if you don't mind, sir. I've gone through Dr. McNew, and I've presented to all the high school counselors. And that's how this student from Ida was located. He went to his counselors, said I'm interested in becoming a firefighter. They recalled that I had spoke before them. I'm already involved with Jefferson High School and Airport, and we've already had a student from Airport High School. So Monroe County has been represented actually through the ISD, and not too long ago, it was actually in Monroe High School at a tabletop where the students were walking around to determine on their, I believe they called it Declaration Day, to go around and determine what high school they want, or sorry, what college they want to go to afterwards. So, the high school doesn't have the program officially, but they're very much interested, like all the other high schools are. They're waiting for student one.
Third question I had is, looking at the hours and then to their dual enrollment, then they go through Schoolcraft College, so, and their certifications, at what level would they come out then, out of Schoolcraft College as far as certifications and levels?
Sure. There's two ways they can come out of this. One is if they do, starting their junior year, and they do firefighter one and two junior year. At the end of their junior year, they're actually certified in the state of Michigan as a firefighter. That's all the requirements to be the firefighter, but obviously in this area of Michigan... That's all the requirements to be the firefighter, but obviously in this area of Michigan, most are also EMS-based as well. During their senior year, if they're going to be eighteen upon graduation, they're then eligible to do the EMS program for dual enrollment as well. They could technically retire, retire.
That's good.
Retired. They could technically graduate from high school, fully certified as a firefighter one and two and an EMT. They would have all the starting credentials of the, kind of the basic level that career departments start off at. If I might add too, one of the nice things about this program is it cannot interfere or cause any grief to the full-time employees to begin with. There's no way that a person under the age of eighteen in Michigan can operate as a firefighter. They can only do cold zone help work type of things, so there's no risk to them, there's no danger to them, and they can't supplant positions.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Andrew?
Yeah, Your Honor. Education, obviously, is something near and dear to my life. Both my parents and my wife are all teachers, and it's very rare that we sit on city council and we have an opportunity to act on anything that has to do with education. We had a rare opportunity, I think it was a very special one, with the Monroe Public Schools Student Advisory Committee. I think this would be another tremendous opportunity. We hear a lot of talk in Lansing about vocational programs that they'd like to offer, and I think this looks like one of them. So, I find myself very in support of this proposal. I don't know if you have talked to the Community College. I know they have partnerships already with Eastern Michigan University, Sienna Heights, and the Middle College, and I think I might be forgetting one. I don't know if there is a possibility to share facilities, if there's a partnership that exists there or not, but I'll leave that to you. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for your support.
What are the GPA qualifications standard?
The GPA qualifications to enter the program are those of entering college. So, they're not, it's Community College-based, so they don't have to be extraordinarily high. You don't have to be in that three, five, or better range that U of M requires. So, if you're coming in as a C student, you'll do well. It is an intense program. You may have noticed that it's a total of twenty college credit hours. Most dual enrollment students hit about six max per semester. This is ten, but there's no way I can divide that any smaller to the state. But what we find is through the interview process, and I put myself very much into that interview process, we ensure that the students have the right choices. I don't want to create a failure program. I really don't. I'd rather tell a student, you know, maybe next year to be more mature for this, but I don't want to put anybody in a position of failure. It's critical to me that I also interview the family in order to make sure that they have the support system because it is a lot of away time from that. But the program meets nights and weekends, so it doesn't interfere with their actual high school day. The high school lets them out for a certain amount of time. But back to the GPA side of it, if they're coming in with a C or better, they'll typically do very well, and I personally monitor very closely because this is my top project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Just really quick, we hope to have the resolution before you guys. We're hoping at the first July meeting for review.
And we have a draft, and we just wanted to introduce the idea and then have the resolution at the next meeting for your consideration, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next item, please.
Our next item, Phil's already pulling the detail up. Discussion regarding, you know, water feature at Labor Park. In 2017, the park plans were completed for six of our parks here in the community, and with Labor Park, it came up for discussion whether we should consider some sort of water feature. The other two locations that they were contained in the park plans were St. Mary's and Carnes Park. And part of it is just by way of background, we, you know, have those two in there. We're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that. I throw that out there for two reasons. One is if you've got two of them programmed, do you pull one of them back at some point in time and consider it here? And then the other part is talking with the, our landscape architect working on this project last week, Lorenthal Point, and that Noel and I talked with him in a conference call, is that right now there is a pretty intense use of the area that we've identified for this park, and do you contemplate, you know, reducing some of the programmed area, whether it's the green space, the playground, some of the other aspects of the project itself? So, I, again, giving you some background on that. What we would look for is, there is a scheduled workshop presentation in the community for July 30th. And so, is in giving Mr. Russell some direction, you know, his council's idea to kind of look at this and maybe see what they can come up from a programming standpoint for the, for Labor Park to put a water feature, understanding that there is going to be additional costs and that there's also going to be probably some reduced programming for that, for the current park plan as presented. So, I throw that out there. If I might, if you could just flip to the other two. This one here is...
Do you want Father Carnes or St. Mary's?
This is Father Carnes, it's fine. Is, you can get a sense of, I'll have Mark run it out there and just real quick, point to where the current water feature is, that little round area. So, you get some perspective of what that looks like in relationship to the adjoining tennis court there, the size of the area. And again, we're probably looking somewhere, you know, pushing a couple hundred thousand dollars for that. And then in St. Mary's, which is the next one, you get an idea where that is located there at the top, kind of getting closer to West Elm there, again, Mark will, I may have to jump, may have to get at this time, but see that. So, you get a perspective as to what kind of programmed water features we have with two of the six park plans. So, having said that, certainly open to your thoughts and consideration in what direction you'd like us to provide Russell Design in preparation for that public meeting on the 30th.
Where is the public meeting going to be on the 30th?
I believe it's at the ALCC, but I can get you more details as to the location and time. And again, it's part of the, I don't see it as being a single meeting, but other than just over a few hour period, presenting a few ideas in preparation and getting feedback from the public regarding.
We'll be able to finalize at future meetings exactly where those, that workshop's going to be.
Yes, yep.
So, if we knew, we'd say it, we'll follow up and let everybody know.
Yep.
Questions, comments from council on this item?
Your Honor.
Come on.
Of course, I like the idea. There's a lot of young people in the area, so I think it'd be good to have it at Labor Park. My question was, is this drawing showing the south side of the street where the community gardens are?
No, we don't have that programmed, that area there. We probably will use some of that East Second Street there for part of the parking layout that may go along with it. If you look at it, significantly reduced parking area as a result of what's being, you know, proposed there on the west end of the ALCC and the Navara Library. So, we probably will have a little more area where East Second Street is designated now for parking. And then, obviously, we're finalizing, securing the parcels on the south side of Second.
I was thinking, that's a lot of land there. We could put it anywhere over there. And then, that huge activity lawn, like a lot of space there, but what do you think we might give up to acquire the splash pad?
Well, I think two candidates are the open space and potentially reducing the play area that looks, you know, it's in the hatched yellow area that you see there. Those would be probably the two primary items that would be affected using that existing footprint.
I'm not a landscape designer, but I like the idea of it being somewhere in that activity lawn area. If we're able to acquire.
A follow-up to a little bit of that, because I, it's been a while since I looked at all the plans for all the parks that were proposed, the six. As the seat manager said, there's kind of some program language in all those. I think it's kind of along the lines of Kelly's saying is, what is the program? What would be the impact? Where would it be? As well as going back and looking at our plans of which parks are kind of first up on the list to be done and how far away some of the others may be. I've had my, I shared my thoughts on the first opportunity in comments regarding all the six plans. I thought that while they're all very well, some are very extensive. I'm not sure that some of the locations for the splash parks and the other parks may meet my liking or my thoughts on that, whether it be St. Mary's or I have to look at Carnes again in relation to all those other activities there. So, I really want to review what's programmed for the ones that might be interactive in decisions made related to labor. That's what I want to do on the 30th. I think splash pad at Labor Park is a good idea in just how we get there and how we prevent the impacts of loss because the playground area on this one, which is Carnes, is less than the one that's at Labor Park. Just in size appearance, what's there and the items that are drawn. So, I want to go back and look at all those as we continue to move forward and get ready for the next meetings. Also, there is other property that may have some plans with the city. We have to go back and revisit that. The lots that the city owns that are directly on First Street that adjoin the properties that are shown here in Labor Park, just as Kelly said, with the gardens. And I think the gardens are there, but I just want to go back and review it all and get some other comments. I think that as we move forward, it's an item that I think in that park and in our neighborhoods would be used. That's my thought. John?
Yeah, Your Honor. The, the location of the splash pads should be, function of the location should be based on the areas that have the greatest concentration of children. I would say probably the orchard area, probably Carnes Field with the neighborhoods down there probably have the highest concentration of children. The one concern I have about putting a splash pad at ALCC or at Labor Park is you don't want to run the risk of trying to program too much into a park. The splash pads are usually utilized mid-June to the end of August, and they're pretty much after, after, after school goes back, when the temperatures start to turn, they're no longer, they're usually not in an operation. So, you're looking at a function that maybe is somewhere maybe eight weeks' worth of utilization. So, you don't want to sacrifice a large part of your park for eight weeks of utilization. One of the things I had thought about relative to a splash pad down in the orchard area would be, not at Labor Park, but I would like to take a look at it. My idea was to put it next to the new fire station, public safety building. We have a lot, a lot of extra room there. We've got it designed so we have expansion space for police. We know what areas are going to be left over. Maybe the possibility of putting it there where the kids are in close proximity to public safety officers makes much for, much safer environment, plus gives them the room. These splash pads can get very busy, and having a small one actually can do an injustice to the kids that are doing it because then they compete for the space. So, you really want to program, if you're going to do one, do it right and put it in a location that's going to be able to accommodate all the kids and their parents because a lot of parents will come to watch the kids. So, I'm just concerned about trying to program too much at Labor Park. So, those are my ideas. I like the idea of the splash pad for the kids. I'm just not, until I see a larger plan, I'm just concerned that it's, we're going to, we're going, we're putting too much into the park and we could have a capacity issue.
That's a good point. I think concentration of children is an important factor also, whether the need or lack of opportunity for such activity for the youth is also along the lines of that kind of thing through. Makes you think of last fall. Just happened to have an opportunity before the end of the season, end of summer, to go to Lake Erie Metro Park and the very significant sized splash park that's there. That's a metro park. It gets activities different than maybe a neighborhood. So, it's not the size-wise, it was the options and alternatives that were there for the, for all those that were used, and I thought that was pretty impressive. So, I think that's something as well known as John, what you're saying, is as we look at the new back of that. Where, now that, I think it's a great idea. If it, it's not going to fit there and so are used in a particular area, where do we put it that makes the opportunities for that concentration of children also that may not have some other opportunities? That's my thought.
Your Honor, if I may add, we may not be able to have the money right now, but we do any of the park planning regardless if it's here at Labor Park, if it's over by the fire station, wherever we decide to put it, we can always put in the infrastructure to accommodate it to when we have the extra money, it's there, you know? So, we're tearing up the park, put in the drains, put in the water lines underground, and then all we have to build is the pad itself and then put in the plate, the sprinkler equipment.
Dig once.
Dig once, yeah.
Your Honor, also, I do like the idea of the fire station because it's manned 24 hours, so anything were to go wrong with the splash pad or anything like that, you have staff there to take care of it or report it right away, whereas there's limited hours at the ALCC Navara Library Building.
I think we have some opportunities for some further discussion on this. I don't see anybody saying, no, we don't think it's a good idea to have a splash pad. It's a matter of working on some of the details.
Well, yeah, Your Honor, just to go along with what Kelly just thought about it, I know Oaks is redeveloping a former convent across the street for a professional daycare facility. You know, what a better place to walk the kids across the street during the hot summer day to play in the park for a couple hours, so. But thoughts?
Okay. Well, I know we got another item or so before we get to a session, so I want to go to Mr. Pastu to the next item.
If you don't, I'll just give Mr. Russell some directions, see what you can come in from a programming standpoint, but we may keep the options open for potentially another location, if that makes sense.
If council members have other thoughts that come up between now and that, just please forward those to the city manager.
Thank you. Our next item is tonight we have our CDBG public hearing and also resolution to adopt. I think contained in there is a description of the programmed line items for that. We spent some time, I want to say late last fall, going through and taking a hard look at how we do the allocations. In many ways, what this is, is carrying forward that same allocation, but as you know, we've got $47,000 additionally programmed this year that we're supposed to receive for the program, and what we recommended from an administration standpoint is to put that into the demolition line item. Couple reasons. One is, you know, I think there is probably still an ongoing need to do some additional demolitions of blighted properties in CDBG-eligible neighborhood there. The other part of it is, is that I think, the other, is that if we decide during the course of the year that we wanted to do an amendment to the budget, it's probably the easiest program for us to move that money around to some other potential use. So, for that reason, we were recommending to essentially adopt the same program that we had last year and then put the additional funding into demolition.
Questions or comments from council? We'll come up at our council meeting later for the budget view and approval. Okay, Vince?
Other than that, I really don't have anything unless council, as there's an item on the agenda, primarily the consent agenda that you wanted to talk about or bring, let us know about, bring to the, for action separately.
To make comment on the CDBG, there is the public hearing. See if additional comments come to that. And of course, it's also on for council on action, as was indicated. There's no other comments or items that council should clarify for the meeting. Are there any other discussion topics you want to present with?
Andrew, I'll start with that.
One small item, Your Honor. Item number 2060, the fiscal and budget amendment. This is just to wrap up funds and balance out for the end of the budget year.
Correct.
And is the $5,000 allocation to the ALCC for the boiler?
It is contained in this proposed budget amendment, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
John?
Your Honor, I can, I've got some comments regarding the cost allocation. Uh, Your Honor, I, I can, I've got some comments regarding the, uh, cost allocation for the ALCC and the lease. I don't know if you want to talk about them now or if you want to talk about them as part of the regular meeting. Your, your, I don't know how you want to do it.
You want, really, the opportunity here is to get some, uh, administration, Mr. Pastu, the opportunity, maybe if there's any clarifications or if it's, you know, maybe something can be prepared, uh, make some comments.
Well, I've got, well, okay, thanks. Uh, I took a look at both the, uh, the lease agreement and the funding agreement and, and I'll start with the funding agreement, cause that ties back into the lease agreement. Um, the, um, I guess the approach that I'm suggesting is that we, we look at the ALCC building as a, as a city facility. And as a city facility, regardless of, if the ALCC board were there or not, we're going to have expenses associated with utilities and maintenance and repair. Uh, and the approach that I was looking at was that the city would, would, uh, would, would, would handle the, the maintenance and the repairs and the utilities of the building. Okay, that's the first part. The second part would be that we cap the utilities at, let's say, Vince says 16,000, could be 16,000, 15,000. So the idea is, is that we pay for the utilities until it reaches 16,000 and at that point, ALCC board has to pay for it. The difference in the approach is, I don't personally want to take the $16,000 out of the $140,000 allocation that we give them. I think the $140,000 should be used for programming for the community center for the kids and the senior citizens and other, other people that use it without, without us subtracting from it the, the utility payments. I think if we pay the utilities in addition to the 140, but we put a cap on it, it'll make them responsible basically to monitor how much utilities they're using, water, sewer, natural gas and electric, because if they go over that cap, then they have to pay for it out of their programming funds. So it, it requires them to be a little bit better stewards of, 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 uh, of the utilities. But I guess the bottom line where I was going was, I hate to see the money taken out of the $140,000 that we're providing to the program. I mean, regardless if it's the ALCC nonprofit, if it was the YMCA, if it was ABC nonprofit, we are contracting with the vendor to provide programming. And I hate to see the programming reduced because we want to pull, uh, utility expenses off of it. So it's a little bit different approach. I know it's more money for the city, but it's kind of like the same approach that we tried to do with the, with the, uh, the Sawyer House, where we're picking up the maintenance and we're picking up the, uh, uh, the utilities. I know they contribute $5,000 back to the city, but they're also in a position where they're rent, they're trying to rent the facility. They're, they're a nonprofit that's renting the facility, whereas this is a facility where we're providing programming money to provide services to the neighbor. So a little bit different approach, but I wanted to throw that out there.
So, and there's something for the city managers to think about before we get to the council meeting. But I, as I look at one, and I may, I think I understand what you're saying, um, this isn't about decision-making here, we're just simply having conversations. When I read it, the utility payments were up to 16,000.
Right.
And expenses above 16 would be paid by the, uh, nonprofit. But I see your point is, as you read further, it says that, uh, while the overall net change is still 140, those 16 is reused on the program. So I understand your point is keeping the program at the 140 and having utilities paid off the, all the way. So, um, I'm not sure Mr. Pastu may have a, he doesn't have a comment now? He'll have a comment at the meeting?
No, just, just to make sure, that in the past, the 140 that was provided covered the utilities expenses.
I know.
So this, as you have identified, this would be an increase in, uh, funding available for, for programming.
For programming.
Yeah.
Other thoughts or comments on this or other items on the agenda?
The only other comment that I had, Your Honor, and just picky, it's on the lease for Mr. Bud's. For some reason, my con, I didn't, my, all the changes I made, it saved. Uh, it, it's, it's really a picky comment, but I think to me, it's just, it just makes a point. It was in the, uh, the lease agreement that, uh, uh, somewhere, and like I said, all my highlights are gone.
Okay.
It's where we, oh, it's in, under the purpose of the lease, where it says, "The premises shall be used by the tenant for public purposes, serving all age groups in Monroe County." And I would just like that changed to say, "All age groups primarily in the city of Monroe." I don't want to exclude the county, but I don't want to make this lease agreement set up for everybody in the county, because we get no funding participation from any of the townships or the county of Monroe. So I, to me, it's, it's just a, it's a pal, it's kind of like a statement.
That's number three on the front, first page of the lease.
First page of the lease.
Mm-hmm. And we know that, uh, as we, and we've touted this and said, the fact that the ALCC does have county-wide participation. Your point is you want to be at least specific in nature to that, but not for the exclusion of those outside the city.
Not the exclusion.
I understand.
But primarily for city reasons.
Would you change, uh, and say, uh, all age groups in the community?
That's fine. I have, I have to change something. I want to pass legal back.
So as we get to the, uh, council meeting later, obviously there's a couple of items to discuss on those. I'm assuming they'll be pulled for, uh, a discussion at the council meeting, uh, prior to, uh, action that will be taken, uh, or postponed.
One other comment, like I said, Your Honor, I had this all marked up and now I have to remember it. Under number 14, reports. I like it because it says, "ALCC shall submit a written monthly report." My suggestion is that we add into that paragraph, "Based on a reporting template provided by the city of Monroe." So we are asking them what kind of information we want, rather than having them just provide a lot of documents to us. So if we can provide a reporting template and require them to fill it out on a monthly basis to get the data that we need, that would, I think it'd be a good thing.
Sam?